Green, should be a green light. There you go.
I didn't realize that the county commission had their meeting this morning. I didn't, was that this morning? Was it? They did have one this morning? Okay. I didn't know if they would have it next week because of the holiday or...
Yeah.
I didn't realize that, so I usually...
I'm fairly sure they have it today.
Okay, I usually watch their meeting, but I didn't realize.
Yeah, you can bring in the meeting back and just open the meeting back in session. We will do a fair indication or any of that, just right into minutes.
Uh huh, okay.
All right, we are back and we are ready for item four. Approval of the minutes of the last regular meeting, which if no corrections are offered, shall stand approved.
I didn't see anything.
Okay, thank you. Item five, public comment. So, this is a time where we allow anyone from the public to come up and speak. Please note that you do have five minutes. If there's anything that you'd like to speak of that is not on the agenda. I don't see anybody.
Okay, hearing none. Item six A. Mayor and Commissioners, the governing body is asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim January 2nd, 2024 as Shannon L. Dick Day in Garden City, Kansas.
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the proclamation as presented.
Okay, there's been a motion.
A second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any comments? All those... I'm getting stumbled here. All those, uh, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Hey, motion passed. Do I want to read that now?
Uh huh.
Okay. Sorry for the glasses. This is new, but I need them. I'm getting a little bit older, so... And my checkup's not until another two months. So, proclamation, whereas Shannon Dick has served faithfully as a member of the Garden City Commission since April 2019, and served as mayor from 2022 to 2023, and whereas Commissioner Dick has played a vital role in the growth and development of our community, and whereas Commissioner Dick's performance of duties and responsibilities as a member of the governing body has been characterized by excellence and constructive contributions to municipal government in Garden City, and whereas Commissioner Dick has dedicated many years to representing people of all ages, races, and ethnicities during the deliberation of community issues, and whereas Commissioner Dick's achievements, exemplary conduct, passion, and sense of fairness demonstrated in all his activities have earned him a special place in the hearts and minds of the people within this organization. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to proclaim January 2nd, 2024 as Shannon L. Dick Day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for his significant contributions to the community, and highly commend the manner in which he has carried out his responsibilities as a member of the Garden City Commission. Sign and seal this second day of January, 2024.
Mayor, item six B. The governing body is asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim January 2nd, 2024 as Deborah Euler Day in Garden City, Kansas.
Mayor, I move that we allow January 2nd, 2024 as Deborah Euler Day in Garden City, Kansas.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Hear any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. And I'll read that proclamation. Whereas Deborah Euler has served faithfully as a member of the Garden City Commission since January 2020, and served as mayor from 2023 to 2024, and whereas Commissioner Euler has played a vital role in the growth and development of our community, and whereas Commissioner Euler's performance of duties and responsibilities as a member of the governing body has been characterized by excellence and constructive contributions to municipal government in Garden City, and whereas Commissioner Euler has dedicated years to representing people of all ages, races, and ethnicities during the deliberation of community issues, and whereas Commissioner Euler's achievements, exemplary conduct, passion, and sense of fairness demonstrated in all her activities have earned her a special place in the hearts and minds of the people within this organization. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to proclaim January 2nd, 2024 as Deborah Euler Day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for her significant contributions to the community, and highly commend the manner in which she has carried out her responsibilities as a member of the Garden City Commission. Sign and seal this second day of January, 2024.
Mayor and Commissioners, item six C. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Garden City Public Schools and St. Catherine Hospital to allow the mayor to proclaim the week of January 22nd through 25th, 2024 as Health Awareness Week in Garden City, Kansas.
I make a motion that we approve the proclamation as, uh, proclamation as presented.
I second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passed.
And there'll be a date and time for you to read it at the schools, so...
All right.
You don't need to read it right now. We'll get that to you.
Okay.
Item D. The governing body is asked to consider and, uh, to consider a request from Cody Kunde, co-founder of Hidden Trail Brewery, to be categorized as a mobile food vendor under the itinerant merchant license category, and to allow one food truck to be located at 2010 East Schulman Avenue at any given time. See Lynn?
Mayor and Commissioners, this is very similar to a request that's been done the last two years. As you guys know, Hidden Trail Brewery is a special, different type of business, or they offer a different type of opportunity for their patrons, and that is the food truck. So, two years ago, you guys did approve a, um, mobile food vendor license in Hidden Trail's, um, name, and then they rotate trucks. So, the way that it's worked in the past is that we allow one food truck. They pay for one food truck to be up their lot, so they usually only have one. Um, so today, before you, you may approve the request as it's been considered in the past, or, um, you may deny the request. But normally, an itinerant, or a mobile food vendor license is $50 a day, 200 a month, or 600 a year, and so they have, in the past, they've paid the 600 for the whole year. And then we also have Cody Kunde, co-owner here today, if you'd like to speak with him.
Well, I know it's been working really well for you, Cody. Has that been working well for you?
Yeah, it's just, um... It just makes it a little bit easier for us and for See Lynn to not have to, every individual day, tell her which truck it is and have them fill out the form. So, we pay the yearly fee, and then it also helps, once in a while, with downtown vision. If they're trying to bring someone in from out of town, Shannon will reach out to me, and they'll do Friday on Stevens Park, and then Saturday they'll do with us. But that way, it helps some of the ones from out of town to try and get two spots, but instead of trying to get them in loop with everything in our town. So, they're still liable for all the random food inspections, stuff like that. We just kind of pay the fee, so that way they don't have to each day register with her, and then if we ever have, because a lot of times too, we'll even have someone that I had on the schedule for Saturday want to switch to Thursday, and they'll switch, so it just makes it a little bit easier if we just make it. And we've only had more than one truck once in a while, and whenever that happens, whoever the second truck is usually just pays their own fee, and that's really only if we ever have, like, a, there's like a cookie truck that sometimes comes through. We don't really, it doesn't really make sense to have two, like, meal trucks. We're not that big, but once in a while, but, uh, whenever we do have two, like I said, they usually, the second one just will go pay their fee. So, this is just for us to have the one, whatever our main one is for the day.
Appreciate that. Any other questions? So, I know we've done this before with, with their organization. How does this affect the entire city then? Will this set another precedent for, like, other, other organi, like, other businesses in the community that would like to have food trucks at their business, or...
So far, it has not.
It has not? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I move that we approve the request from Hidden Trail Brewery to be considered a mobile food truck vendor and allow food trucks to operate licensed one at a time.
I second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Section seven of the agenda is the report of the city manager. You'll find three staff reports on there. Are there any questions on those staff reports? We'd be happy to try to answer those. Hearing none, we'll move on to meetings of note. If there's any of those meetings listed which require RSVPs, it asks that you do those through the city clerk's office. Either See Lynn or Corey can coordinate the city's registration or RSVPs for those events. Item nine is the consideration of the appropriate, of the appropriation ordinance. If, if approved, the appropriate motion would be to approve ordinance number 2594-2024A.
I'll make the motion to approve appropriation ordinance number 2594-2024A.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion passed.
See, item 10A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution, uh, which if approved would abate conditions at 2104 North Third Street, and we'll go through the agenda item for this. There's three nuisance resolutions on the agenda. Um, on the second and third one, we won't go through the full body because it's about process, um, but if there are folks in the audience that would speak to this issue, we just ask that they identify themselves before the commission does a motion and a second. So, I'll turn it over to Trent.
Mayor, before you today is 2104 North Third. We've got some indoor appliances, mattresses, and other miscellaneous items located outside on the property. We sent two notices out. The first one being November 28th of 2023, the second one December 15th of 2023. Unable to get any response from the tenants or the owners of the property. The actions or alternatives before you today is, number one, the governing body may approve the attached resolution, which allows us to go ahead and debate the nuisance. And alternative number two, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommends approval of the attached resolution, alternative number one, and any charges for the fiscal, any charges associated with the abatement of the property will be assessed to that property.
And what's the resolution number?
3091-2024.
I move that we approve resolution number 3091-2024.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passed.
Item B. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution, which if approved would abate conditions at 2109 Denison Street. If approved, the, it'd be resolution number 3092-2024.
I don't see anyone in the audience coming up, so...
Mayor, I approve resolution number 3092-2024.
I second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passed.
Item C. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution, which if approved would abate conditions at 601 East Hazel Street. If approved, it would be resolution number 3093-2024.
I don't see anyone moving, coming up, so any entertainment of motions?
I move that we approve resolution number 3093-2024.
I second.
Okay, there's been a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trent. Item 12A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the lease and operations agreement between the City of Garden City and Alicia and Emmanuel Guzman for lease of space and operation of a restaurant located at the Garden City Regional Airport. Rochelle?
Good afternoon. Yeah, today is an exciting day for the airport with the lease proposed in front of you. The advisory board did have an opportunity to review the lease and recommended approval as well. So, Emmanuel and Alyssa Guzman is, are interested in opening Provecho Mexican Barbecue located at the Garden City Regional Airport. The lease begins in February, and so as long as they can get moved in and staff ready, we're going to allow them to start moving in. As soon as this gets approved, get staff hired, then they will start operation out at the airport. So, we're really excited. They weren't able to come today, but they're super excited to be part of our community. They are from Dodge, so they are expanding their business into Garden City and our community, and looking to partner with some local organizations as well to bring some variety out to the restaurant as well. With that, staff and the airport advisory board recommend approval of the lease and operations for the restaurant located at the airport.
Yeah, they've made a wise decision, expanding to Garden City. That's all I'm...
Yeah, we're excited.
I make a motion. We approve the lease agreement, uh, between the City of Garden City and Alicia and Emmanuel Guzman.
I second.
Okay, there's been a first and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B. The governing body is asked to consider options regarding the renewal or discontinuation of the half-cent sales tax to stabilize the city's ad valorem property tax levy and finance construction and maintenance of transportation improvements expiring September 30, 2025. In April 2013, Garden City voters reauthorized by an 83-16 margin, a half-cent sales tax to stabilize the city's ad valorem property tax levy and finance construction and maintenance of transportation improvements for a 10-year period. This was the third 10-year reauthorization for a sales tax initially approved by voters in the 1990s following a year of severe winter conditions that caused significant damage to roads. As the sales tax generation of the community has grown, this tax increment, along with the unobligated half-cent city sales tax and the city's portion of county sales tax, are the largest source of revenue to the city's general fund. Growth in sales tax revenue has stabilized the property tax mill levy and covered the majority of the impact of community growth and inflation on general fund expenses. Based on information provided in the most recent city audit completed by Lewis Hooper and Dick LLC, between the 10-year period of 2013 to 2022, the City of Garden City mill levy has decreased from 38.98 to 38.51. In that same timeframe, the City of Garden City has seen a rise in overall city valuation of over 50%, meaning all mill generate, meaning a mill generates more revenue by a proportionate amount. The increase in overall valuation should not be interpreted to be an average increase of 50% in the value of each property in the city. In approximately the same time period, the corporate limits of the City of Garden City has grown by 28% or about two and a half square miles, and there has been considerable value added via new construction. There are several revenue sources to the general fund, and while each dollar is earmarked for each expense in the general fund, it is fair to characterize that ad valorem property taxes and sales taxes are used for police, fire, Lee Richardson Zoo, parks maintenance, street maintenance, and some parks and street projects. Budgets in all of these areas has grown, but some more than others because the physical growth of the community caused a corresponding need for growth in personnel and equipment. For instance, the combined number of authorized police and fire personnel to accommodate that growth grew from 111 to 140, or a 26% growth. Had the half-cent sales tax, one, not been in place, and, two, not grown at a pace well exceeding natural inflation of goods consumed, the community would be underserved in these areas instead of receiving a higher level of these services in relation to comparable Kansas communities. If the commission elects not to pursue reauthorization, or if a ballot issue to reauthorize were unsuccessful, and no adjustments were made to expenses, the absence of this half-cent sales tax, which generated approximately 4.6 million in 2023, would have to have been offset by 16.6 mils. If the lack of revenue would be made up by only reducing expenses, that level of expense cutting would trigger a sizable reduction in workforce for those general fund departments not funded by general fund sources. More specifically, this could only be accomplished by reducing the number of authorized police and fire positions to well below 2013 staffing levels, cause at least a partial closing of Lee Richardson Zoo, and reduce parks and street maintenance, staff, and services. The voters of the community have consistently voted in favor of sales tax ballot issues at the city and county level, and the feedback from the public during information meetings suggests there are two reasons. One, it's preferred over property tax, and, two, it's estimated that at least 50% is paid by out-of-county shoppers. If the city commission wishes to pursue reauthorization of this half-cent sales tax, there are four options with respect to timing. One, April 2nd, 2024, special election. This would appear at the moment to be a single-issue ballot. The city would therefore be responsible for the cost of the election, which is estimated to be around $30,000. The results of the election would be known before the publication of the city commission's 2025 budget deliberations. Second option would be August 6th, 2024. This would be in conjunction with a scheduled primary election. The city would have a minimal cost associated with adding a sales tax question to this ballot, estimated to be less than $1,000, and this is really to generate ballots for those affiliated with parties that don't have primaries, so this would be somebody affiliated in, uh, either independent or Green Party, Libertarian Party, those types of things. The city commission will have gone through preliminary 2025 budget meetings and considered a revenue-neutral rate resolution, but will not have yet considered adoption of the final 2025 budget. The third option, this would be the November 5th, 2024, general election. The city would not have a cost associated with adding a sales tax question to this ballot. The city will have adopted a 2025 budget prior to this date. Option four, an April 1st, 2025, special election. This would appear at the moment to be a single ballot issue, and again, the city would therefore be responsible for the cost of the election, which would be estimated, again, to be about $30,000. This would be the last date to approve a reauthorization that could continue without interruption the half-cent sales tax currently levying. In its consideration of the options above, the governing body will find that there are several variables to take into consideration. Cost of the election, assumptions or historical trends on voter turnout, and the ability to adopt the 2025 budget with confidence in the revenue streams to the general fund. Not all of those variables point to the same option, so the policy discussion for the governing body may start with identifying if there is consensus around prioritizing these variables and see if that points to an alternative, or at least narrows the choices. Finally, if the city commission has a desire to pursue reauthorization, direction to staff regarding the amount, purpose, and timing would be appropriate. The last three voter-approved renewals have been half-cent sales tax that sunset after 10 years with the special purpose to stabilize the city's ad valorem property tax and finance construct and maintain transportation improvements. So, the alternatives before you are to direct staff to prepare an ordinance for an April 2nd, 2024, special election, to reauthorize the half-cent sales tax to stabilize the city's ad valorem property tax levy and finance construction and maintenance of transportation improvements through September 30th, 2035. To direct staff to prepare an ordinance for the same purpose for August 6th, 2024, primary election ballot. To direct staff to prepare an ordinance for the same purpose for the November 5th, 2024, general election, or to direct staff to prepare an ordinance for the same purpose on the April, to place a ballot item on April 1st, 2025, special election. The governing body may approve one of the options above with a variation in amount, purpose, and/or length of the sales tax, or the city could direct staff not to prepare an ordinance seeking reauthorization of the half-cent sales tax, in which case it would expire September 30th, 2025. Given the magnitude of the revenue stream to the city's general fund, the articulated goals of the commission and community feedback regarding the preference of sales tax over property tax, staff does recommend the governing body choose one of the alternatives that would direct staff to prepare an ordinance seeking reauthorization of the half-cent sales tax set to expire September 30th, 2025. The half-cent sales tax, again, generates approximately 4.6 million in general fund revenue, representing 14% of the general fund revenue.
I really like alternative two, where we have it on the scheduled primary election. That kind of gives us an idea of, uh, we get that vote in, but then that gives us an idea of where we can set our budget. That's my thought. I mean, then it's, we're not setting the budget, and then, then we're trying to catch up, we're playing catch-up, where we have that in our pocket, and then we can, we know what we've got to move forward.
And I think also, if, if there's comments on that, on that election, then there also is another opportunity where if we run herself on the November 5th, there really isn't much of an opportunity to really make adjustments. So, I think, sooner than later, I mean, I do like the lower cost, um, at that.
So, one big question real fast, is the cost for the election, what part of the budget is that?
General fund expense, so we probably pay for it out of, uh, either the city commissioner or the city manager's department budget.
And I agree that they, with the characterization that's, you know, right now, property tax is something that people are looking at, and property tax is passed on, really, even if you're renting or you do not own a home, it's still passed on, and then sales tax has been successfully used several times. So, I'm going to go ahead and, I'll second that. Are you making that a motion?
I'll make, I'll make that motion that we direct staff to prepare the ordinance for an August 6th, 2024 ballot issue, on the primary election, consider reauthorization of the half-cent sales tax to stabilize the city's ad valorem property tax levy and finance construction and maintenance of transportation improvements through September 30th of 2035.
Second.
Okay, there's been a first and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passed.
Thank you. Uh, item C. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the City of Garden City's Title VI plan. Derek?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. The City of Garden City is required to implement a Title VI plan in accordance with federal regulations governing civil rights and public service delivery. Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Civil Rights Restoration Act of 1987 mandates that entities receiving federal financial assistance must not discriminate on the... on the basis of race, color, national origin, sex, disability, age, or low-income status. Title Six Plan serves as a systematic framework, ensuring the city's policies, procedures, and practices align with federal non-discrimination requirements. It includes proactive measures to identify and rectify potential barriers or disparate impacts on individuals due to various factors. Implementing a Title Six Plan is crucial for safeguarding the city's eligibility for federal funds and demonstrates its commitment to upholding the principles of equal access and non-discrimination. Furthermore, a Title Six Plan allows the City of Garden City to address discrimination grievances or complaints promptly and transparently. It establishes a mechanism for individuals to voice concerns, seek resolution, and guarantees the accessibility of city's programs and services to all residents regardless of their background. The City of Garden City collaborated with the Kansas Department of Transportation to create our Title Six Plan, utilizing their template and framework to ensure compliance with federal mandates. There are three alternatives for the governing body to choose from. One, the governing body may approve the Title Six Plan. Two, the governing body may deny the Title Six Plan. And three, the governing body may give staff further direction. Staff recommends the governing body approve the Title Six Plan to adhere to federal regulations governing civil rights and public service delivery. There is no fiscal notes, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the Title Six Plan as presented.
A second.
Okay, there's been a first and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Thank you, Derek.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve appointments to the Cultural Relations Board. Derek?
The Cultural Relations Board consists of nine members from various racial, social, ethnic, religious, and economic backgrounds. They are appointed by the governing body and serve to promote cultural diversity throughout the community. As of December 31st, 2023, Amy Longa and Virginia Seifert terms have expired. There are two vacancies following the departure of Sofia Hernandez and Kay McPhee. The board has received two applications for consideration. Additionally, Amy Longa expressed interest in reappointment. However, as Amy has completed two terms, a waiver of resolution number 2196 is necessary for her continued service. Following their meeting on December 4th, 2023, the Cultural Relations Board recommends appointing Belia Rodriguez and Nidya Ortega to fulfill the remaining terms left by Sofia Hernandez and Kay McPhee with terms expiring in December 31st of 2025. The board also recommends waiving resolution number 2196 to reappoint Amy Longa for a three-year term spanning from January 1st, 2024 to December 31st of 2026. There are three alternatives for the governing body to choose from. The governing body may approve the waiver of resolution number 2196 to reappoint Amy Longa and appoint Belia Rodriguez and Nidya Ortega. Two, the governing body may deny the waiver of resolution number 2196 and only appoint Belia Rodriguez and Nidya Ortega. Or three, the governing body may give staff further direction. Staff and the Cultural Relations Board recommends approval of the waiver of resolution number 2196 to reappoint Amy Longa and to appoint Belia Rodriguez and Nidya Ortega. And there is no fiscal notes, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mayor, I move that we approve the waiver of resolution number 2196 to appoint Amy Longa and appoint Belia Rodriguez and Nidya Ortega.
A second.
Okay, there's been a first and a second. Do I hear any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek. At this point in the meeting, we're ready for the consent agenda. If the commission doesn't wish to pull any of those items off and discuss them independently, the appropriate motion would be to approve consent agenda items E1 through 5.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda of items 1 through 5.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Do I hear any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed.
All right, thank you. That concludes the business portion of the meeting, so if you want to start the commissioner reports, mayor.
Starting with Commissioner Unruh for the commissioner reports.
Usually you've got to get a pickup on what other commissioners say, so you don't forget anything, so great, so. Well, I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Dick and also Commissioner Euler, and we enjoyed serving with you and so excited for your day. You better take advantage of it because it's half over, so I can hardly wait to hear the escapades that you both, um, today, but I just want to say thank you for, it's been great serving with you. And then congratulations to Commissioner Nguyen and Commissioner Langgraf. We're excited to have you onboard, and so it's, it's really a neat opportunity that we have to serve together, and so looking forward to these next couple of years. I also want to say Happy New Year. Can't believe already it's, the new year came and went. Hopefully everyone had a really incredible, not only Christmas holiday season, but also New Year holiday season, and 2024 is looking to be just incredibly successful in Garden City. There's lots of things that are going to be happening, and I'm really excited about several big, big openings and some things. Also, I really appreciate Commissioner Ortiz always reminds us to shop local, and so that sales tax really does make a difference. I did not realize until I read that, what a half-cent sales tax, the $4.6 million. So that's the reason why we shop local, is to really not only bolster our economy, but also to make sure that we have the things in town that people need when they need them, so. And with that, I just want to say Happy New Year to the, to the staff and to the commission, and looking forward to a great 2024.
And then, I just want to congratulate first, Mayor Ortiz on being elected as mayor, and welcome him to his leadership. I also want to kind of comment, kind of as Commissioner Unruh did, with the great leadership from Commissioner Euler and Commissioner Dick. You know, I was visiting with somebody and every commission, or every commissioner leaves a little bit of themselves on, as a commissioner, and they have proven, and they've left something for the commission as, as well as for the community, so I want to thank them. I also want to welcome Commissioner Langgraf and Commissioner Nguyen to the, to the city commission. And, oh, just wanted to mention too, that got this fabulous publication in the mail, so if you, it's the Garden City Rec Activity Guide for February through August 2024. When people say there's nothing to do in Garden City, I challenge you to go through this activity guide because there's something that you can find in this guide to do, so. And it's just the Garden City Rec part, there's other organizations in this community that there's lots of things to do in Garden City, but a really awesome guide and great getting it in the mail. And that's all I've got, I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year.
Good. Commissioner Langgraf?
I first want to say congrats to our new mayor, Mayor Ortiz. Look forward to serving with you on the commission. I just also want to thank former Commissioner Dick and former Commissioner Euler for all their service in the past, what they have done in the past. I also want to thank our staff for putting together a lovely reception across the hall for us for the new commissioners and outgoing commissioners celebration. Thank you for that. And also, I just want to say, look forward to the future for Garden City, seeing what happens in the future, because I know the future is bright for Garden City. So, thank you.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes, Happy New Year. First and foremost, congratulations, Mayor Ortiz. Thank you so much to Commissioners Dick, Commissioner Euler, for all of their leadership and support, not just the past couple of years, but specifically to me for the past few months. It's been so helpful. Congratulations to Mr. Langgraf. It's very awesome to have two new young faces at this table. Lastly, Livewell Finney County is hosting a youth mental health first aid on January 9th. It's from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, so you get a certification for, it's open to parents, family members, caregivers, teachers, pretty much everybody, to help the adolescents ages 12 through 18 in our community. You get a certificate, so if you would like to register for that, the deadline for the January 9th session is January 5th. I think as we head into this winter season, it is so crucial for us to take a step back and take time for ourselves because burnout will happen very, very quickly for each one of us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, a congratulation goes around the room to a lot of people, so we commend everyone for their hard work and a Happy New Year to all. I do like to express that this isn't over for commissioners who have been on this panel for years prior, so I do like to stress that there, there is never work, work never gets done. It's always just, we got to elevate and keep elevating, just as Garden City is growing and growing, so I just like to stress that as well. So thank you for the congratulations. I really am humbled to hear those words, and it really, yeah, it really touches my heart, so. But also like it does, it is a bittersweet kind of celebration, so I'll, I'll miss those commissioners and I'll miss those people that I see a lot, but I will see them on the street, and like I said, it's not over. I will be calling those people for a lending of an ear or, or yes, some comments, so appreciate their hard work and dedication to the community, to the people in the community and the surrounding community. I was born in Garden City, but I always say that I was raised southwest Kansas, so there's a lot of people involved in the community, not just here in town locally, but also the surrounding areas, so please keep in mind, shop local, and Happy New Year. We are adjourned.